Let's begin. It's called the Order of the Brattleboro Planning Commission Meeting of August 5th, 6:01 PM. Let's just go through the minutes of last meeting, July 1st. Everybody's received them, then I'll entertain a motion or take a motion to pass them, to approve them, I mean.
The motion that we approved the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion about the minutes before approving, before voting on their approval? No?
No contention.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes from last meeting, please put your hand up, keep it up. Okay, that's everyone except for Lindsay. Lindsay, what is your decision?
I'm just abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay. Great. Are there any announcements? Well, we can say that with the first agenda item, I'm sorry, so we posted the agenda earlier, or a week ago, it had the local wayfinding towards amenities agenda item, but then Sue and I remembered that we had taken a request for the, by World Learning for the land use amendment, you know, two or three or four months ago or something. Anyway, but yeah, it's like, okay, so we could have done it for the July meeting, but we had enough already plans and the agenda was set. So then we thought we'll do it August and then slipped our minds, but then it came back to our minds. So we're postponing the wayfinding agenda item and put this one on. So if there's no more, oh, Sarah.
This is more of a personal thing than a planning, well, I don't know, the inner sack, I suppose, but the Public Works just a couple, last week, put lines on Oak Grove and Clark for some traffic calming measures and yeah, it looks great. It's like, I have to like do a double take because it like looks like an actual road out my window as opposed to like a neighborhood's like, I don't know, like my brain hasn't like connected the two yet, but yeah, so I'm excited to see the impacts that it has.
Have you noticed any yet?
Um, yeah, definitely. It's, I think people are a little confused with the parking, like people are still parking on the side that they normally park where there like isn't sort of no, there's, you know, no parking anymore. So I'll be interested to see like if that changes, but yeah, I think people are definitely like, you know, like wait, what is, and especially where the triangle is before they put the yellow line. I'm glad they decided to do the yellow line. I don't know because I, I thought that they weren't going to do it. But people were so confused with the like one way without that yellow line and now the yellow line makes it like very clear, like you gotta go this way.
Go this way.
So, yeah, but yeah, so I've definitely been people out, it'll be interesting to see like if it like, once people get used to it. You know, if, if they'll go back to likes, you know, speeding, but anyways, it's great. And yeah, the guys did a good job.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks for telling us about that. I'm going to check it out. Okay, let's move on to the request for a land use regulation amendment. This is by the institution, World Learning up off, well, a road off of Black Mountain Road. And we have a staff, we have a letter that goes along with it from a few months ago, and that was before we had our that request form on our webpage formalized, so that isn't done for this and a staff memo kind of analysis of the request. What can I say? I mean, I'm going to definitely pass it over to staff and someone representing World Learning here. But I wonder if I should kind of posit some general questions first, like as we go through this or when they're done presenting or taking questions, you know, thinking about if we feel, you know, like the proposal is clear, if we need any clarifications, if we'd like more info and then to revisit this at another meeting, or do we feel prepared to make, you know, a semi-formal decision on this right now, right? Because if we say, if we were to say yes to this, that doesn't change the land use regs tomorrow, it's a process. And do we feel like their proposal is, is general and is that fine? Or do we need to know more specifics of an actual project? And yeah, so just some questions to think about, but I think Ray of World Learning, would you like to go first or do you like staff to run through their analysis?
Happy to say just a couple of introductory remarks about the project is to give you some context. So, you know, we've been, we've been there for a very, very long time. We have a beautiful location in Brattleboro. It's proximity to Van Lines.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. My name is L. Raven Ray. I'm Senior Vice President of Legal Affairs and General Counsel at World Learning. We're putting this request in a little bit out of order because the project isn't off the ground yet while we're asking for a change after the project already been planned out fully. It has been planned out to a fair degree. We are under the impression from listening in town and from being residents of the town, we're aware of a housing shortage. We're aware that we have 200 beautiful acres in a prime location and we have two parcels of which are good for development and we've used a couple of our own partners to sort of look at the site and do some state of the art analysis on what's possible on those sites and what's buildable on those sites. They're each of those two parcels. And, you know, these will be accessible housing units for residency and for workforce, frankly. It's hard to find folks to work for us at World Learning if they can't find a place to live nearby. So this will be a help to us as an organization as well as to the community at large, in our opinion. The preliminary planning that we've done, and we do already have at least two interested developers. So this isn't a pie in the sky idea. We've got mockups. And we feel that if both parcels were developed, if the zoning were changed to allow for the development and all the other member issues were resolved ultimately, that we could put 150 to 200 affordable housing units there. You'll also want to note that we're in between two other developments that are like us, Buttonwood Estates, which we provided an easement for, and that's right below us. One of our parcels is right above it. And there's another parcel further up Kiplin Road on the other side of the road, which would ultimately be behind the exit three, sort of between the park that's there with the mobile homes and the highway. I do have some drawings, but you can probably pull it up on your maps there. So between these two parcels, if they were fully developed, would be 150 to 200 units. The types of units we're thinking of putting in are duplexes, both triplexes. They're not single families and they're not trailers. They're, they're affordable housing in between those. So we feel like it will be filling a need in the larger community and we feel like it will be good for SIT and consistent with our values to build affordable housing units in a prime location in town. So what we've come to is we do have interested developers talking about this and who've helped us work up the site plans, et cetera. And the thing is, they're not really willing to invest more time if we can't, if we can't get the zoning changed. So to Tom's point, if we knew that upfront, we could sort of press the accelerator a little bit on some of those plans versus knowing that there are two other developments right nearby with the same type of zoning we're asking for. So I, you know, I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have about that, but it's basically affordable housing on those two parcels or any one of them, depending on the decision of the board and the commission. I'm not sure how long it'll take to build, but I do think that it's going to be ultimately a benefit to World Learning as an organization and its workforce and to the town. So those are just some preliminary comments. We're, we're sort of internally referring to this as SIT Commons. So that's sort of, we're hoping that SIT Commons can receive the zoning change as efficiently as possible. And then again, start the real work, which is the permitting and the real development and site work that comes later.
Okay, thank you. Lindsay's hand, I think, was actually up before you even started speaking, I noticed. I should have. Maybe it's. Okay.
I just got a technical question because this hasn't, this sort of question hasn't really come up exactly before the commission while I've been on it and this to me sounds like spot zoning. And so I'm just wondering if the planning staff can explain to me what the procedure is in Vermont for these types of requests and how this sort of thing is okay.
Yeah, so you know, our town attorney has been away, so I haven't had a chance to speak with him about, you know, any concerns about spot zoning. In terms of a process for land use amendments, it's just the land use amendment process. So these can either come from the Planning Commission or it can come from interested citizens that are interested, people in town that can bring amendments forward. So the process is for the Planning Commission to think about it. You could hold a public hearing and start the process and get community feedback. Or you could determine that you don't want to hold a public hearing on it. I mean, in terms of spot zoning, you know, some things to think about are, you know, public benefit. Who's, you know, who's benefiting? How does the public benefiting? But I think that's something that I think we need to look into some further. There's a couple of points that I would like to make, you know, at some point as well and why I think we should be looking into these parcels and potentially changing the zoning on it, but we'll get there.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, exactly, I'm not familiar with the property and I would like to be before I I can make a decision on how I feel about it, but is there, is there something special about the property where we don't want it to be built on? I'm an environmentalist and I'm a landscape architect, so I'm.
I'm actually glad you asked that because our board is equally concerned. And in fact, one of the parcels that we're talking about, part of it, you know, was to protect the view shed of campus. And so we've done that research and it is, you could be on our main campus and not be able to see the development from it. So this is based on where it's sited. So it protects the view set, view shed from the main campus. I think, you know, if people as part of this process need to walk around, so I can campus by the way, drive on up. And you'll see where Buttonwood Estates, where their entryway is right now. If you look at the ridge line right above that, that would be one of the parcels. Right?
And it's this parcel that I'm showing here.
So it's right up above.
Can you put them in satellite mode?
There we go.
So you can see those, the Buttonwood Estates, which is a 55 and over, single family owned community.
Right? Yeah.
And the other one is right behind that purple with that parcel.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's got one, it's got a plateau up here. It's kind of sloopy here, it would, this area.
Any follow up to that, Bonnie?
No, I guess I would like to see the design plan so that it's being done with, you know, the environment in mind.
Yeah, I mean, my response to that is if it got to that, I think we want to keep it kind of on a holistic level, like on a, not a holistic, on a higher level about is this an appropriate area for denser housing then? And what is the relationship to the town plan and state statute? So rather than the details, because that would be the Development Review Board if there was a zoning change. Yeah.
John?
Yeah, Tom. Before we get into commissioners' opinions, I would like to hear staff's feedback on the amendment.
Okay.
And whatever general rule, boundaries and rules you want to follow suit is fine by me, but I prefer to hear what you have to say about it.
I think that's a good idea. It goes in line with the kind of process that we have, you know, put in place on the website where we get both the opinions or perspective or analysis of both coming towards us. But does anyone have an objection to that or?
I just wanted to just ask one, I mean, pretty much what Bonnie was saying environmentally, just trying to get an idea. And historically, is anything up there, you know, prior before you go forward? If you're.
I'm going to address that.
Well, yeah, I mean, the folks that have been doing the site analysis are aware of something. For example, on the, on the parcel that you're looking at, there is a small pond, for example, so that might be an issue. So again, we haven't been really like to sort of like dive in, this is some of the larger questions that the topography itself presents, or if, if we're not going to get zoning like our, the other ones nearby, so. So again.
Hi, Tom. Once again, before we start, before we start into a discussion, I'd really like to hear what staff has to say.
And that's what we're getting ready to do.
Well, well, we weren't getting there directly and that's why I inter.
A quick question. Okay, sorry. Apology about that. I just wanted to ask a quick question.
So maybe that can be revisited after staff's presentation on.
So so the new state law that went into effect in, on July 1st requires, basically stipulates that if you are in the water in the sewer service area, then the minimum, it's, sorry. The, you have to allow a minimum of five or more dwelling units per acre for each allowed residential use. So we have a conflict right now. We have it zoned as rural residential with one unit per one and a half acres. However, it is on water and sewer.
Both of them.
Yeah, both, both of them are in the road. So, so the one that's highlighted right now actually, actually has the sewer going right into it. I mean, they've got a dorm there, a former dorm and an office building on this parcel. This property also has water and sewer in Black Mountain Road and up into Buttonwood. So the stuff is there as well.
Can I nitpick a little bit?
You can nitpick.
So can you click that property and, and how is, how is that defined, being in the water and sewer district?
So this is where we need to do a little bit of, again, the town attorney, attorney being away. But it's defined in statute, an area served by municipal water and sewer, water and sewer infrastructure means an area where residential connections and expansions are available to municipal water and direct and indirect discharge wastewater systems and not prohibited by state regulations or permits, identified capacity constraints or municipally adopted service and capacity agreements. And then it keeps, it goes on. There's, there's a couple of other, none of which fit. So basically it is, in our view, it is it is available to municipal and water sewer connection. So then we need to work through, well, our town plan says this, state statute says this, so it's a little bit complicated. So for those reasons, staffs have the opinion, we should keep working on this. We need to sit down with the town attorney. There were recently upgrades to the Black Mountain Pump Station, so I don't think there's capacity constraints that then. So, so we're in this like gray area where I don't feel comfortable outright for the Planning Commission to say, no, not at this time. I would, if I could just also add, I talked about the development on the site that's highlighted right now. This is probably neither here nor there, but at some point in the, I think it was the late eighties, this other parcel, it's not clicking fast enough. This parcel here was, did have approval to do like 80 units of condominiums. They didn't do enough to vest. I mean, I think you can actually, there, there might be some cellar holes there. There might actually, the road is kind, yeah, there's foundations and like the road, you can kind of see the remnants of where it had been cleared. They didn't do enough to vest that development, so it's not really relevant here, but it had, at one point, had been identified for denser development. And then back to the point about the water in the sewer, which I think is the most compelling. If, and this, this also gets to Lindsay's concern maybe about spot zoning. If we were to look at this and say, we've got to make a change because of the statute, there are some other smaller areas of town that we would need to look at. Old Guilford Road has water and sewer in the line, in the road. Mather Street does as well or has, has one or both. So, so it could actually mean we're not just looking at these parcels for this project. We're looking at some other areas of town.
Do you, would staff like to present any more on this before we return to commissioners?
I guess the, the only other thing I'd add, which I addressed it in the memo, is that the state's A and R Atlas, which kind of looks at some of the natural resources on the site. Ray had mentioned that there is a pond on the, the, I call this, I call this one, I'm highlighting now, parcel one, just for ease. There is a pond on that. There is what they call class. Let's see, it's a forest habitat, habitat, mostly because it's forested. So there's some connectivity there where it's connecting to other blocks of forest. On a scale, a weighted scale of one to 10, this block is a four. And then the block on this one is a little bit higher. It's at a six, probably because it kind of connects up to the West River. Kind of blocks up that way. If you can kind of see it on the map, if you you can kind of see the connections. So that was what I could find for natural resources data at the landscape level, not at the site level.
I had a question related to that.
Okay.
Can you explain the threat level? There was another sort of measurement just after that. Can you just explain what that is?
I think that, I didn't read that whole document that I cited, but the threat level looks at the potential for development on that site. And I think it, I'd have to dig into that a little bit further. So the threat level on parcel two that's highlighted now is a bit higher at six. They felt that that was more of a threat than parcel one, which was ranked at a, oh, sorry, seven. This one was higher. Maybe because it's already got some development on it. I mean, it's, it's pretty, there's some slopes here, I you know, probably the, the water and sewer right there, the sewer to the site and the fact that there's kind of a little cleared area with some development probably made it be a higher threat.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Take Lindsay's hands up.
Yeah, Lindsay, let's hear from you.
So reading the memo that staff wrote, it sounds like you want to be able to continue working on this and find out more about some of the legal stuff. So beyond being introduced to this concept tonight, is there anything that staff needed from us to be able to just continue doing that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, because.
Just, you know, like a nod, yes, we understand.
Very astute question, Lindsay.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm nodding yes, that I understand this. And I'm very happy to have staff continue to, to work with the potential applicant and, and with legal. I don't really feel any great need to discuss this at length this evening because I think that there's a fair amount of unanswered questions that will help us to have a better discussion later.
I'm moved that we formally tabled this, just to sort of legalize what Lindsay has said. I mean, it's interesting to talk about, but I'm not sure we can add any value at this point. And I think staff should continue to work on it, resolve the issues and then bring it back.
Well, that's a motion to table it. Is there a second?
I'd second it.
So discussion before a vote, and I'll go first. I had a couple of questions to maybe ask staff that might help them in this process that we're of this motion. Any other discussion on the motion before we vote? To table it. Okay, all those in favor to table this agenda item, raise your hand. Bonnie, John, Lindsay, Sarah.
I really don't agree, but I don't really, I think we should, I don't want to continue this, kick the can down the road. I want to get it done tonight.
Oh, I don't think we can get it done.
I don't think.
I mean, we can resolve exponentially rather than kicking the can, as they say.
But I think.
Make it, because by the time I don't know when Bob Fisher gets back and the rest of that, there's other stuff coming down the pipe. And I think something like this, once it's already been established.
Okay, we're voting, so the voting are, I mean, four people are already in favor, so whether. But I'll forward my questions to staff.
I don't agree.
After the meeting. But all those against? Okay. All right, that's the agenda, end of that agenda item. Okay, thanks for coming by. Expect to see you again.
TB, TB, continue.
I will come visit.
Yes.
Good, good, yeah.
Remember, we're ahead of schedule with this agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our monthly town plan, 2026 Town Plan. An update on the recent activity that's been worked on by John and staff since our last meeting. And then we're going to get to our long awaited review and any clarifying questions about the SWOT analysis we did a couple or a few months ago. John, what do you say? Do you want to?
Yep, I will put it up. Let me just start it as a slideshow.
Okay, next slide. So this month, past month, we continue to build the current state presentation. We're in the process of adding new data. I've mentioned a couple here, Public Safety Enhancement Update, July 23rd to the Select Board, which if you haven't seen, I strongly recommend watching. It was very, very interesting. And then also the BDCC presentation to the Select Board on May 7th, which was quite dry and quite long, but also very interesting as well. I mean, it was very dense in terms of data. We met with the, excuse me, the Town Energy Committee. I would say probably they were very enthused. I would say probably the biggest item for me at least coming out of that was that the town's attorney has said that we can't really provide a sharing area for the committees to work, to use on their town plan work because it violates state open meeting laws. Is that, is that an accurate way of saying it, Sue?
Yep.
And then finally, we've started meetings with key stakeholders as well. We've met with DBA, Downtown Brattleboro Alliance and BDCC. And I'll, I'll very quickly go over some summaries of, of our conversations with those two. So we went in and asked both organizations first, what is your SWOT analysis of Brattleboro in the area that you're involved in, which of course is what we're asking the committees as well. And then also, what is your strategic, long-term strategic plan? And then we had some specific questions depending on which group it was. So from DBA, first of all, the strengths is that Brad is aesthetically pleasing. That means that we have historical buildings. The main street is very cute and adorable. Also, Brad's location is obviously very desirable. We're at the intersection of 590 and 91. And then in Kate's opinion, the residents are absolutely committed to the success of Brattleboro. And she saw that as a very, very strong strength. Weaknesses, limited space, green space downtown. She used the example of if you want to have lunch out on a lawn somewhere, it's very difficult to find a space to do that in downtown proper. The park that we have now, which I forget the name of honestly, is, is on the other side of Town Hall, so it's not really downtown to a lot of people.
The Town Hall.
Thank you. There are not enough resources focused on tourism marketing. So Kate's organization is Kate. And now she has a part-time economic development person, but he's pulled in different directions. So there really aren't a ton of resources focused on marketing Brattleboro as a place to vacation at to the rest of the world. And then finally, traffic downtown. The traffic numbers going on Main Street are phenomenal. I mean, they're incredible. But obviously there are a variety of things, some of which are sort of undesirable traffic. You know, the big log trucks and, and the, the large construction vehicles that create a lot of noise and, and disruption, if you will. Uh, some opportunities that we, we talked about. Uh, first of all, is the Whitestone parking lot plans. That is a plan that apparently has been in place for turning that parking lot that is next to, um, I can't think of the name of the hotels.
It's the Preston Lot. It's across from the transportation center next to the latches.
So there's, there's plans in place to turn that parking lot into, uh, something that could be used for programming that has green space that you could, uh, provide river access to. Uh, frankly, now from my observation, it's mostly a hangout for, uh, people. By the transportation center, um, I thought there were some good ideas. It could have rental cars, for example, to provide, um, individuals coming into town without their own transportation, a little bit more flexibility. And it could also provide longer destination bus service. In other words, beyond what mover today provides. And then finally, and probably the, one of the most exciting certainly, certainly that we talked about was, uh, the new straight, train station is going in. The bridge is going in, which also means that we're going to repurpose the older bridge as a walk slash bicycle path. And that is obviously a portal to the town. And, and sits right on, on the waterfront as well. And that could possibly be combined with, of course, the acquiescence of New Hampshire into doing something maybe with the island in the middle of the Connecticut there, right? Creating a tremendously desirable portal for recreational tourism. Uh, in terms of threats, you know, at the same time, we talk about, uh, Brattleboro's strength, uh, uh, locations being a strength. It's also a threat. Um, it's easy access to Southern Vermont. If you, of course, probably everybody's heard the term, the heroin highway, coming up from Hartford. And then also, um, out of state immigration to receive Vermont services. We're starting to see some data that people are now moving into Vermont to receive the better services that Vermont provides in contrast to New Hampshire and Massachusetts. So, um, that's a threat as well. And then another threat is that youth are leaving. Vermont's, uh, Brattleboro is becoming older. Youth are leaving, and that provides an obstacle developing a youth-oriented culture and services downtown. If there's no youth, then there's not going to be much of a demand, for example, for a climbing gym or anything else that might provide some sort of recreational draw again for tourism. And then obviously, I mean, we all know more than we need to about this downtown crime and drugs. Next slide. Thank you. Um, so they're, they're analyzing the consumer survey now, I'm sorry, uh, Kate is analyzing the consumer survey now. We talked about some things. They're not really, I suppose, in concrete yet. And so, um, we, we didn't add them, but there's some very interesting data coming out of it that's going to have to be resolved. And then, um, economic development observations. Some ideas that were discussed for, uh, increasing the traffic downtown and perhaps the downtown purchasing might be longer and more consistent store hours. You know, downtown seems to shut down about, what, six, seven o'clock, something like that. Um, there's limited services for locals. Sorry about the spell, spelling problem, but only the co-op and the Ace Hardware Store really are considered local stores. The rest are considered tourist stores. And then there were some complaints, um, that have come back to uh, Kate, particularly about restaurant price points are too high. Um, uh, this is going to be very interesting because, you know, as we talked about in the last meeting where we presented the data, Brattleboro is poor. It has a lower median income than Vermont and US both. And so locals perhaps are going to want lower price points on restaurants and other services than tourists would. Um, and then another great idea, I think, and sort of the brainstorming part of it, was that Main Street should be experiential, perhaps, more experiential, and appealed to a broader demographic. And as I said, a climbing gym came up as an example, but also other experiential services that would provide interest and draw a younger crowd to downtown. Questions on this?
Is this similar to what the select board was mentioning last week at the meeting, a week before about this particular, well, most of us talking about crime and all the other.
Yeah, but theirs was different. Theirs was on public safety.
I think it's simple. I spent one of these events that they had this goal similar to this. So I was just wondering if this is something that's a collaborative thing or?
We've been doing these.
No, this, this discussion is with the DBA, but I, I think you're referring to your July 23 presentation to the select board, right? But, um, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I mean, that's what, uh, Jim Baker, I don't know if you've seen.
Yes, exactly. And that's what I recommend. If you haven't seen it, that you look at it. It's very, very interesting.
I agree. It, it was something. It was really, yeah.
Um, a question I have is that maybe you guys get this done on the weekend right before the meeting, but I'd love to have it in the meeting materials each, each month, if you're able to.
One of them was conducted at three o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, well, well, then that's how it is. So, okay.
Yeah, we'll put it up.
But that's, that's just coincidence. We will do that as a typical process.
Yeah, I'm forgetting if it's been in past ones or not. So, memory loss, I guess. Sorry.
Okay, finally, now the conversation with BDCC. So, um, again, started with strengths, weaknesses and opportunities. The strength BDCC considers is growing a new American population of Brad. If you know, they've been very involved in bringing immigrants, uh, into Brad. Um, and they see that as a continuing strength. Again, they cited the location as being a strength for Brattleboro. And then one thing that I wouldn't have known, but of course they do, because they work in that's, that realm, is that Brattleboro has an excellent reputation and many connections uh, in regional cooperation. They're considered good to work with, if you will. And, and very capable and competent as well. Uh, no weaknesses really came up specifically. Um, oper, under opportunities, uh, this is sort of related to the location part of it. Well, I won't, I won't say that actually. That's probably wrong. But Brad is a hub town, right? So for the region, we offer a lot of the services that people from outline areas come in and use. That is an opportunity, but it's also a weakness, um, as well. Because obviously it has both bad and good to it. Um, from a threat standpoint, I, I'm going to be a little weak on this because, uh, Adam knew this. And I, I'm just trying to copy down what I heard. Sue, maybe you can clarify if, if I miss it, but. So, um, one of the things that BDCC has seen grow in terms of an economic sector is uh, added, added value food production in the Brad area. And one of the things that that requires is something called the ability to uh, remove obviously organic waste, which is measured somehow by something called abbreviated BOD. And BOD is a limited resource based on, uh, processing capability. And so BDCC mentioned that specifically as a potential area that we might run into capacity on, just as that, as added food value is growing.
You got it right.
Okay. Um, and then employment is getting squeezed and, and it's getting squeezed through consolidation. And then through the fact that out of state, um, uh, entities are buying Brattleboro, say, manufacturing organizations and other larger organizations consolidating them and reducing staff in, in Brattleboro. The example they cited was the old consolidated milk that has lost a significant number of white collar jobs. And then finally, uh, as a more general, uh, threat, it's uncertainty. The, the world is very uncertain right now, and I suspect that provides a threat to everyone. Steve, could you go to the last slide and I'll get this done? Thanks. So some, some other very interesting takeaways, and probably the most important of the takeaways, in my opinion certainly, was that BDCC was very clear on what economic development they do, what their boundaries are for economic development. And the point is, is that they don't do every bit of economic development that Brattleboro might want. They focus on larger entities. They focus on manufacturing, for example. They focus on infrastructure. Where Brattleboro might focus on marketing tourism, it might focus on smaller sort of, uh, uh, fam, family helping at home, hands at home type enterprises. And, uh, Adam again mentioned that there are other towns the size of Brad, multiple other towns the size of Brad, that have a dedicated economic development role. In other words, they have an individual in that position. Brad does not. They have a part-time person that works for DBA. And, um, without specifically pointing at us, uh, BDCC said, you can see the difference when you have a full-time economic development person that is working under the direct guidance of the town to focus on town economic development. And I think that's a very intriguing idea. Um, the other comment that I thought was very valuable that BDCC made was that Brattleboro doesn't have one or two or three economic areas that are standout above all the other ones that they could focus on. So instead, Brattleboro should be nimble in responding to the changing conditions, because their point was that, go ahead.
No, somebody.
Oh, that was just me.
Oh, okay.
They're in my field, sorry.
The Brattleboro is, you know, Brattleboro needs to be nimble, because it's what might be an economic development strength today is not necessarily going to be an economic development strength five years from now. And so we have to be able to change and respond to the changing ecosystem that we worked in. So, um, he had a couple of points that were sort of related to that, in my opinion. One was, again, that Brattleboro should focus on building the infrastructure that leads to economic development. So if you look at the BDCC Economic Development Plan, they focus on things like training, they focus like, on things like bringing in more people. They focus on things like internet bandwidth, which they all consider, which they consider all to be infrastructure that provides the foundation for continuing economic development efforts. And then in addition to that, um, they, they suggested that Brattleboro should focus on supporting entrepreneurship ecosystems. And so that might mean that, you know, we have connections to people with money that could provide, excuse me, seed capital to people that have good ideas, right? It might mean getting, um, mentoring to entrepreneurs that have good ideas that might just need a little bit of help to understand how to successfully run a business. Um, the final item, which I think was also very interesting, but again, I think Sue and Steve know this already. It was just good to talk about it for my sake, if nothing else. And that is that we should be looking for best practices for economic development in small rural towns. So, um, you know, we're talking at a, at a city town level now about tax abatement. And, and that's really a piece of a broader strategy, which is incentivizing desired behavior through taxes, right? Using taxes as a lever to get people to do what is good for the community. And then another idea that, that came up that I thought was very interesting, and that was creating a development investment fund from a portion of the room tax that is collected, where today it might go to, um, reducing a portion of, you know, the tax burden on the population, which is certainly valuable. It also diffuses the impact of that room tax where we could be pulling that and funding some good ideas. And then finally, another lever for doing economic development is zoning, obviously. And, you know, it, it actually was kind of interesting to me that the issue of the, um, uh, the auto service shop on Putney came up. And certainly, regardless of what the salute, what the decision was on that particular case, it sort of begs the question as to whether or not we should discuss whether or not neighborhood center is the right zoning for that particular area of Putney. And that's part of doing economic development, right? Is, is finding the right zoning for, um, the right area. And that's what I had. Questions?
Wow, yeah, thank you, John. It seems like you presented that very well, I think. A lot of very different and dense.
Very interesting conversations.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and again, I can't emphasize enough, if you haven't seen the, the police presentation, it was very, very interesting. They have collected a lot of data.
I, I have to agree with you, John. Could I watch that? Well, actually at home I watched it, I'd be rather in person, but he did, Jim Baker and they did talk about a lot of stuff and what they're doing now, what's going to be, okay, they did a safety walk just recently.
Do you have a question or comment about this?
Well, I just wanted this, this is building up to that.
Okay, great.
Okay, sorry. So, yeah, what you were saying, basically that, so that, are you injecting basically what they was talking about with the safety downtown as well? Your flat street near you such as that economically, uh, that's pretty much keeping a lot of growth potential down in that area?
Well, obviously the downtown merchants believe that crime and, and safety is an obstacle to economic development downtown, certainly. But I think from, from our standpoint is we're collecting data on the state today of Brattleboro, and we don't want to create this data ourselves. We obviously want to pull data that other people have spent time and energy collecting. And this is a case where, you know, the crime data that the state has collected through their task force would be something we would use as we describe the state of, the current state of Brattleboro.
Um, Lindsay?
I was wondering if the folks who, um, were talking about tourism and marketing expressed any concerns about marketing and tourism for Brattleboro, considering all of those threats and current weaknesses. Like, I don't know, like, I would personally be trying to market Brattleboro very much right now to tourists.
You know, Lindsay, that is a absolutely fascinating point. And, and it's a very interesting discussion, because, uh, from the different data points I've seen, I, I'm going to guess there's not only that question, but also the question of do we want Brattleboro to be for the locals? Or do we want to be, do we want it to be for the tourists? And I don't think there's a, I, I wouldn't say based, again, on my observations, there's a consensus yet.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And, and that would be a question, by the way, that would be a question, in my opinion, we would bring up in the public forum that's coming in, in 25 and ask the residents and say, what do you think? And, and try to lay it out in a way that they understand that there's consequences to saying, you know, um, it's not for the tourists, because I don't think we, none of us want, uh, McDonald's that serves $5 hamburgers on Main Street to be really kind of exaggerate about it, right?
Yeah.
John, can you, and maybe, um, towards the beginning of, of these town plan monthly meetings, it was, it was, um, described. But could you just quickly say how you, um, envision that when we do, or when you guys do, you know, numerous, numerous SWOT analysis with different groups and people and commissions? How, how you envision it will get all integrated in? Will it be like on the same level as public comments? Or will it just be, you know, will, will there be a hundred pages of, 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 of comment points and we'll somehow try to distill what's more important, you know, most important or most said? Or what do you think?
So, I, I'm, I'm going to speak for myself, because we haven't talked about this as a group yet. And Sue and Steve obviously join in as, as you wish. But to me, I see a lot of what's happening now as developing the foundation for the presentation and interaction with the community. So we're going to go into the community with a knowledge of what can be done, what's being done now, what works, what doesn't work. And then we can ask more intelligent questions and provide the community better data to, to, um, give their input on, if you will. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah.
So I, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to say, well, BDCC told us to do this. This is what we're going to do. But I, I do think that you can't, I, I mean, I know from previous experience, you can't go into a group of hundreds of people and start from ground zero. They, they, they make better solutions when you ask them to edit something, rather than if you ask them to create something from nothing.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, if I can add, Tom, um, I, I agree with what John said, but I also think, you know, we're talking to subject area experts, whether it's a stakeholder or a boarding committee members, um, that have some interest in it. So I also see it as kind of planting the seed of some things that we're going to dig into. And it seems we want to feature it in the town plan.
No, that's absolutely true, Sue, because a lot of good ideas are coming out of this and not ideas that necessarily we would ask the community to like vote on, right?
Does anyone else have questions or comments, or John, staff, do you want to say anything else?
No, I guess I would just add though, to your, to your question, do you see this all compiled? I don't, other than in our background notes. I don't see it as an addendum to the town plan, like that. It's kind of our, our working notes.
Yep. Right, um, Sarah?
I may have missed this in a previous, um, presentation, but, um, who else do you plan on speaking with, if anyone?
Hmm. Um, you know what, Sarah, can I put that out? I, I mean, I can tell you Wilson Pouting we'd like to talk to. We'd like to talk to, um, other agencies working with the unhoused. Um, I can't right off think of any other economic development agencies, um. Were we going to talk to mover or not? No, probably not, right?
No, no, um, I, I actually can't think off the top of my head too, and maybe that's something we have to get back to and, and vet that.
Yeah, why don't we get back to, we obviously took the ones that we were thought were most important to talk to first.
Sure, yeah.
But, but we're definitely going to talk to a few more, but I don't know how many more, to be quite honest.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Um, could, could Steph flip to the very? Can Steph flip to the very first slide? So I can, I think there may have been a question, oh, sorry, the second, yeah.
This one?
No, the
This one?
Yeah. Okay, I have nothing. If we're going to review the SWAT analysis that we did on June 3rd, there was a couple of questions about the SWAT analysis process and how we think that, you know, if it could be changed or improved at all, so let's keep that in mind, although I don't see anyone asking any questions or more comments right now. So should we just move on to that, then? Reviewing our, the SWAT analysis that we did on June 3rd? Okay. And so after we did that one, that was basically 20, I think Gary and Bonnie, you weren't here. It's the same thing, those four categories, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And we did it in the prompt with something like, from our, as planning commissioners, general purview, what do we think of Brattleboro? With those four categories, like those groups did. We had five minutes for each, and we each wrote things down on each of our computers. And then staff kind of grouped them by theme, and then we asked staff to do the same thing on their own time. And then they did another one, which will be another page. And then they, it looks like they prepared a memo with general themes. And, you know, and things that were said the most.
Yeah.
Categories.
Yeah, so if I can take it from Tom, so I'm sorry, the board isn't showing all the best. If I go out, it might be a little small to read, and I'm sure in your handouts, they were pretty small in the printing. So, yeah, this was the, we tried this whiteboard on Zoom for the first time. We did that with the planning commission at one of our meetings. And I mean, what I did in the memo is kind of talked about what staff said and what the planning commission had to say. It was kind of difficult to actually analyze and find themes, but, I mean, there were some repetitive, you know, things that came up. So like the DBA, we thought our development pattern, they were talking about the downtown, but both staff and commissioners felt like our development pattern of kind of this downtown with high density neighborhoods and kind of more rural surrounds was one of our strengths. Preservation of place, whether it's the buildings or whether it's the rural landscape, was a strength. Infrastructure, recreational amenities, whether it's organized recreational through the town, Wreckin' Parks Department, or the more informal outdoor recreation. The ability to have public transit, whether it's the bus, even if it's not ideal that a town our size has public transit was a strength. The land use regulations allowing housing density, citizen engagement, and forward-thinking staff were strengths. Some of the common weaknesses were the housing stock, whether it's the age or the condition or both. Low wages, and also I should say the price of housing, the ability for people to afford it. Low wages, tax burden, and the land use regulations can also be a weakness in some areas. Opportunities, kind of like DBA mentioned, the waterfront development, taking advantage of our location as a gateway into Vermont was an opportunity. And then improving the transit network. Threats, climate change, economic conditions, absentee landlords, state and federal mandates, driving up costs, and our demographic situation where we are older and kind of have less younger people. So by my own eye in comparing the whiteboards, that's what I was able to glean. Let's see if I can go to the other whiteboard. Not to do it while I'm in here.
Well, health plays a part in that, too.
Sorry, what does?
Health.
Health.
A lot of people now are experiencing a lot of health issues and stuff.
Well, that's because we're an older population.
I'm sure there's certainly specifics to Brattleboro along in that topic, but one thing that I forgot to mention is that we I think we tried to give some specificity, it'd be like, like how for all four of these things, how is it kind of unique to Brattleboro more so than other places? But I think, you know, some of that's true, like maybe, I don't know, I only want to guess, but there may be certain health metrics that are very different.
Right.
Percentage wise even, or per catheter in Brattleboro than some surrounding towns or regional.
So this was the staff, we did it at our staff meeting Monday, so there were Steve and I, the zoning administrator, and the sustainability coordinator. Yeah. So.
So there was a couple. If would it still be valuable to ask these discussion questions at the end of the memo, or maybe?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, John, as well, since, or John and staff, both of you have, I mean, I think we put off the SWAT analysis for a month or two, and meanwhile, you've done a couple more SWATs with the DBA and the BDCC, so maybe there's there's less desire to, or maybe feel like the process is fine, but anyway, still, let's open it up. You know, a couple commissioners weren't even part of this process, but maybe they can, if they've done SWATs before or catching up now. So one of the questions is, is this a valuable exercise to continue doing with groups to create some consensus about the important factors for each group?
John has his hands up, but I think it's up from before.
John, go ahead.
Hey, Tom, I just want to clarify, I think what is an important point, and that is, when we go out to a group like BDCC or DBA, they are very, very comfortable and experienced doing a SWAT. And so before we can even describe what a SWAT is to them, if you will, they're already telling us strengths, weaknesses, and all the rest, and they understand it very clearly.
Yeah.
That's not to say that the planning commission doesn't, but I think the planning commission has used a completely different process than we use with these other groups, and the process the planning commission has used is much more appropriate for a larger group of people who have a broad set of experiences and background with SWAT analysis. So it's very important, in my opinion, to get feedback from you, you, the planning commission, on the process, because we're probably not going to just go out in a public forum and ask, you know, give us your strengths, weaknesses, we're going to have to use a different process to get that data. Which is one of the reasons we tried the particular process we did with the planning commission.
Right. And but then you still plan on doing SWATs with the Energy Committee, Conservation, a bunch of bunch of other town boards and committees?
Everybody's, everybody's over the map, all over the map in terms of how they want to get this data, everything from, you know, don't bother us, we'll write our chapter, to, you know, hey, we're in that, we're going to need to be constantly nudged. So I'm not sure we can get a common answer for you out of our experiences with the committees. This is a, this is a classic way to do SWAT analysis in a very large group of very diverse people. And so that's why I think the planning commission's feedback and suggestions for improvement is very valuable.
Oh, Lindsay, please, go ahead.
So are you saying, John, that doing the SWAT analysis with other groups you think or you know is going to prove difficult because of a lack of awareness of the process?
I think if you went to a public forum and told people that you were going to do a SWAT analysis and asked them for strengths, weaknesses, blah, 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 they would be all over the map, and you would spend a lot of time just trying to get everybody head in the same direction. And so my opinion is that this sort of sticky note process, which most of us have used before, if we've done any kind of this kind of analysis, is a better way of getting the same answers without in a way that they better understand, right? Use a word, use a word to describe strength, right? Don't make a complete sentence, don't, you know, justify it, all that kind of stuff.
Okay, I think that I, I basically agree with you. I would say that once we get to the bigger public meeting things, I don't think that anyone needs to necessarily use the word SWAT, and I think that you all might consider just narrowing it down to strengths, weaknesses. Even people who are really accustomed to SWAT analysis have a difficult time differentiating between the different categories sometimes, and I think it might be less frustrating. That's just my opinion.
No, and I think that's great input, and I just happen to agree to you, but that's kind of input we're looking for, because I think that's very valuable.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I would say for boards, commissions, committees of a few to, I don't know, let's say up to a dozen people. I think the sticky note interactive thing was, was a good way of handling it. I've never done these before, SWAT analysis, to my recollection. But I think that was good. If it was just orally, you know, amongst several commissioners, I think, you know, that'd be kind of a long process. People going one at a time. And then it would still have to be analyzed later by staff anyway, so I think it was good to just have everyone working on it at the same time and maybe even come prepared with their thoughts to just transfer over to the whiteboard. And then another thing is, it's, as far as when it gets explained, I remember we spent a little time going back and forth about like, well, is this just within the planning commission's powers? Or is this anything to do at all with Brattleboro? Or is this, you know, within the purview of the town plan, or is, I'm actually kind of expanding beyond what we went around back and forth with back then. But or is it, you know, anything us as planning commissioners can think of, because we're planning commissioners, and so that's valuable? So, you know, just keeping in mind, like, how targeted do we want this to be? And is the targeting able to be communicated? Bonnie?
Well, I don't know if any of you were involved, but a couple of years ago, Center Congregational Church did a very large project. We hired a company called Sacred Spaces to help us see what we could do in our community to expand our church. We reached out to every element of our community in Brattleboro, and we had a very large gathering of, of everyone you can imagine, educators and bankers and regular folks all. And we did large, large sheets of white paper with stickies and and it came out, we do, I do have a a report from them, a great analysis I could be happy to share. Because we really, we spent two years and about $11,000 getting, doing this research on the area. So it might be helpful to take a look at that, because it feels like you're trying to reinvent the wheel here a bit, just a tiny bit. It's, it's helpful to cooperate with other groups that are already, you know, making an effort to do this, so.
I'd love to see that.
I would be very happy to share it with you, John. I mean, you can, if you want to stop by at the church, I could give you a copy of the report.
But but I do want to point out one thing, though, and that is that the doing the brainstorming of strengths and weaknesses is not only to collect the data, but also to build investment in the process and the final answer of the people doing it, if that makes sense. So even though it might repeat what people already done, it's important because people in doing it themselves.
Oh, you muted.
Unmute yourself, John.
Yeah, then if they just take other data.
Yeah. One thing that comes to mind is when you've mentioned earlier, John, about how if you just present to the general public, just like in nothing to react to, then it can be kind of just disparate and not, not very focused, maybe. So, and this is this part of this, and with, you know, doing SWATs and other questions to different stakeholders and groups is building the foundation. Is that like a pre-prepared, summarized, collated SWAT like that, but cleaned up and everything could be presented? That could be one thing that's presented to the public. And then I don't know exactly how they would interact with it right off the top of my head, but it could be like adding check marks to the ones they agree with, or or Xs if they don't, but then I don't know how they would move it to another category if they want it moved, but that could be a way of doing a large group SWAT that already has a foundation built, but maybe
It's a very good idea.
Maybe isn't too messy.
Yeah. Another idea we had is, you know, maybe we present some sort of current assessment to this public forum before we get into the strength and weakness process. So everybody's leveled on what the data says, right? There's, there's a ton of things that we could possibly do to help people become more efficient and get them feeling more comfortable about the answer.
So, John, was this a big workshop group you did this with, a bunch of people from different organizations? Like I said, I don't know.
No, 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 we just meet with, we meet with a couple of key people, sometimes one. The big, the big event is going to be when we go out and do the public forums.
Okay. You said I've done my share of this in the past, stickers all over the walls up here. Usually unless there's one person facilitating it, and they'll ask the question, what is the number, and then people would do that, whichever, you know, they want to go forward with. But similar to what Tom was saying, we had did that in the past for a couple of committees that were in. You pick the most out of each, either the strength or weakness that people are more concerned about. Narrowing it down that way. It beats doing a survey in some cases.
I've done voting before, that's another very good idea.
Yeah, I mean, this is good, too, because people interact. And, you know, people are getting involved with this, which is great. It does make for a workshop at a focus group that can be put out there, people for that type of awareness, maybe that's something that can be put out.
I mean, I think, I don't think we're, you know, set on exactly what we'll do with the bigger targeted outreach, but I think there's some good ideas in there. I mean, maybe we take this as focus groups, and then we take something different to the public.
Yeah, I mean, we're just collecting ideas at this point, yeah.
No, this is, this is good, getting that feedback.
Okay, last words about the town plan for this meeting? Don't need to. Okay, great. Well, any expectation of what the next town plan, the next month's town plan agenda item might be?
Yeah, I'd like to, I know Steve is working his tail off on putting the data together, and I'd like to present more of the current assessment data in the in the next month. There's some really, again, some data that you may have seen before through other presentations, but also some data that he's generated himself.
Sound good, commissioners? Okay, let's move on to the downtown bike parking agenda item. I provided a memo for this one in our meeting materials. And then also staff is going to at least present the referenced downtown Brattleboro bike parking inventory from done between 2018 and 2021. So a little bit of work has already been done in this realm. So I'll just run through briefly this memo that I provided that I wrote up. So downtown bike parking, this would be in the urban center district. We have a bunch of zoning districts, and we recently agreed, the planning commission a few months ago, agreed to, let's just say, kind of beef up the requirements for bicycle parking, short-term bicycle parking, so like where it is, what type of uses, rack design. And that would need to happen for, for certain, most redevelopments or new constructions, you know, when when the zoning permit goes through. But we made an exception for the urban center district, and that's pretty similar, and it was kind of maybe based off the precedent of how we treat automobile parking, where we often minimum car parking decisions aside, there had been, or there are currently regulations in all the zoning districts for car parking, except for the urban center district, because the town, well, for all sorts of reasons, but the reality is that the town provides that, both like street parking and, you know, the parking garage and parking lots. Maybe because that's viewed as a much more efficient way of doing it, because redevelopment would be so slow, and we can just view it as a, as a whole within the district, and the town can take action more quickly and more comprehensively and effectively. So the planning commission made a decision that to kind of, I guess you'd call it, put it on the town's to-do list to to assess and maybe implement short-term bike parking in the urban center district. So whether that looks like, you know, bike parking lots or racks spread out, or or those pop-up things in parking spaces, it could be that. or those pop-up things in parking spaces, it could be that. And then also our, well, I gave some backgrounds from the several meetings we had about bike parking half a year ago, where staff kind of weighed in about seeing some value to doing that, I think. And our current town plan has this actually as a to-do to, that there's a lack, there's a statement from the public that that there's a lack of bicycle storage in the downtown. And it makes one of the actions of the plan to improve bicycle storage in the downtown. And then, so I followed all this up by, I didn't fill out the form that we've put on our website for people interested in requesting something to the planning commission, like a land use reg amendment. But I heard from commissioner two in previous meetings that this would be valuable and maybe a good use of time for when staff or commissioners have an idea for the whole commission to run through. So, you know, maybe I didn't enter it into the form, but I put it right under here, under analysis, where I stated the problem and proposed action, expected results, benefits. As I, you know, all of these are as I see them, of course, and drawbacks. I'm not going to run through them all because there's a lot there and in a two-hour meeting, I hope you all saw this. And particularly the, it's pretty general, but the proposed, you know, work plan for this, you know, the steps that we'll take. So I'll take questions and thoughts, but I want to, I'll go to you, Gary, second, because I saw John's hand up first. John, go ahead. You're muted, John.
Sorry about that. I'm just a little bit confused. How is this different than the bicycle parking regulations that we've been discussing for a bit?
Would Steph like to explain it in different words than me?
Sure. So this is actually looking concrete on the ground. What is the bike parking situation in the urban center, which is our downtown? We had decided when we agreed to the language that we'll bring forth at some point with the land use regulation amendment, that we weren't going to require bike parking in the downtown of private businesses, that the town should be providing it, just as we provide the parking lots. So this is actually the next step to kind of determine where do we think bike parking should be in the downtown and then a plan to go about getting it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I was going to piggyback with John, because I was going to ask the same, because in the past, we've had like those islands, like their people's bank for the bikes. Like the bike, and that's why I said I didn't, I've spent like a year now, so I don't know where you're at or where the town's at with that. So I don't know if there's any, other than what information you have.
I wasn't involved in that project, but I'd say maybe that was in recognition of the perceived lack of bicycle parking downtown. And it was like one project that that got some motivation and funding behind it, but was it was it sufficient to meet, you know, the
Right, yeah.
There was, yeah. And, you know, I wouldn't say that was comprehensive. That was just a one-off trial. Or maybe it's continuing, but do you have anything more to add to that?
I'm not exactly sure the one that you're talking about, I, you know, we can go to the bike parking inventory in a minute now. The town does own some bike parking racks that are in the downtown. There's like the parklet, which is a bikelet in front of the people's.
That was the movable one that
That's the one you're talking about. Yeah, so that comes out every year. Then there are some other racks that are placed on Main Street. They're on the sidewalk and I know that some merchants were recently upset because they didn't get put out till July, right? It will put out in August or November. So but yeah, when we're ready, I could kind of show you the inventory that the Wyndham Regional Commission has done.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, considering in at least my proposed work plan, that the first step is reviewing any existing relevant planning or assessment work. Something has already been done. At least as this first step, but Bonnie, do you want to ask your question?
Well, I'm curious, you know, if we have a map design of where they already are, which would be helpful for people who want to ride their bikes in town, you don't know where to park your bike. It'd be helpful. I remember seeing a few like by the rec center and, but I'm not sure where they all are.
Library.
Can I pop it up?
Yes.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, you're pretty bad, too.
So this is a inventory that the Wyndham Regional Commission did between 2018 and 2021?
I don't know if you're sharing your screen or not.
I can see John.
At home, can you see this screen?
No.
Okay. That's why we couldn't see John. Okay, there you go. So this is an interactive map that the Wyndham Regional Commission did with bike counts from November 2018 to 12/21 in public or semi-public spaces downtown. So
And that outline is literally the outline of the urban center district, zoning district that is it?
Yes, yes. So like, it might be a little delayed as I click on this, but this is the library. And so on July 13th at 1 o'clock, they had one bike at their bike rack. So let's see, the blue. So the green stars that you'll see are bike racks and then the blue are the places where they informally found bicycles are parked. So this is the municipal center that I'm clicking on now. At 2 o'clock, there were one bike, one bike on May 24th. So it's a bit dated. You can see, yeah, I could just give you an overview. On the left here, you could click on the bar to show that these were the dates they were out collecting data and the number of bikes they saw. So the busiest stage, July 24th, 2019, there were 36 bikes. They even did counts during COVID, you know, 13 bikes on November 24th, 2020. So it's kind of interesting.
Are there ways to like toggle things on and off?
No.
Okay.
So green's at a bike rack. Blue is not at a bike rack. This little inset map that I'm showing you now talks about the conditions. So at this point, the Food Co-op had 20 U-style bicycles. They now have covered bike parking. They still might have the 20 U-style. Where the installation is, they've ranked the accessibility, whether it's sheltered at that point it's still. So these are kind of the attributes of the different bike racks. So in your project planning, I can imagine that, you know, this template is here. If the planning commission was collecting some data, this inventory could be updated.
Super minor, if you think it would be more useful, especially if it was a resource that we were publishing and sharing with the public, we could also republish this or update it data with the ability to turn things on and off.
Right, like just the location of the racks or?
Yeah.
John?
So there's a little, is the little speedometer indicator up in the upper hand, right? Imply, excuse me, that on the day in question, we were at 60% of capacity?
No, that means in all the days that they've collected, they counted 653 bikes parked throughout downtown. 60% of them were at bike racks. 40% were in other locations. So those, the blue stars are where other places that they attached it to a sign or a tree or.
I guess I'll run through what I'm thinking of how to proceed with this whole thing. It's, you know, it's kind of just a general list. Assuming that well, so I already said the first one, which is reviewing whatever, you know, relevant assessments or surveys have been done. Then the next would be reviewing or analyzing the existing state of bike parking in its facilities in the downtown. So that maybe that could look like doing this and updating it or viewing this as relevant enough so, and being sufficient. Or it could be, you know, actually going around to and getting visuals and descriptors and photographs, maybe. And then making some some review conclusions off that. And then I think it'd be important to determine, to zoom out a little bit and just determine what is best practice or what we think is most appropriate for characteristics of a downtown, of a town like this, or specific to Brattleboro, that indicates sufficient downtown bike parking. So what I'm thinking is like, you know, density of bike racks or what sort of places they should be in front of or, you know, distance from entries, designs, rack designs. Just, just, just what makes a place well-supplied and sufficient and good? If that's what we're aiming for with, I mean, I would think sufficient kind of defines itself as something that's what we're aiming for. But anyway, then the next step would be to take what's existing, you know, an existing assessment and what we think is sufficient or good that we're aiming for. And then to come up with recommendations specific to downtown bike parking. So this could be, once again, it could be locations, numbers, you know, spacing between them. It could be designs of the racks. It could be, is a map needed? It could be, yeah, how to publicize this, the color to paint them. The, should they be homogeneous or should they be different designs? How will this be funded? Who implement, who do we think should implement it? Should it be a phased rollout process? Are there certain ones that are priority over others? So lots of things can be considered. And I'm thinking we could just, either just feel good about this and deliver it to the town, you know, deciders and implementers, whoever those may be. Or first we share it with them for a bit of feedback to make this as good as it can be. After get that feedback, then finalize it. And then in time after there's any or all implementation, then we could review it and do anything.
You're going to say have a ribbon cutting?
Yeah, have a ribbon cutting. Yeah, we could all bike around and use them. Yeah, so I just want to know if that seems like a good plan? If people have modifications or things I left out, things they want to delete? If people want to be engaged in this in some way, I want to be engaged in it. And we don't need everyone to be. But it'd be great to have others, especially if someone feels they have a strong suit or enthusiasm about an aspect. So yeah, I see John's hand up.
Well, I think I was going to some place you were in a way. So I agree with your process, but that's implicitly a huge amount of work. And who would you? I don't know who you thought would possibly do that work, but I was thinking maybe there is a bike-oriented group that would be very vested in the details and would be willing to do things like research on best practice for, you know, what a fully capacity bike rack is. And, you know, where to stick the bike racks and all the rest, rather than, for example, have paid staff do that.
Paid staff doesn't have time to do this right now.
Well, I kind of thought that too.
Provide assistance, but we can't take on the project by
Yeah, I kind of thought that too. I mean, that it's a huge amount of work.
It could be a stipend.
You could have a stipend. That's another possible solution.
He's willing to do it, he's offering it.
There are plenty of bike groups here that very well, I mean, I'm not trying to suggest the solution necessarily, but I would imagine there are people here that would really feel this is very important work and feel vested in it and want to contribute.
Yeah, thank you, John. I have two responses to that. I can't believe I didn't even, you know, we had so many meetings with local motion, for example, and throughout writing this throughout writing this motion, it didn't even cross my mind to ask anyone besides people who come to these, you know, who will be at this meeting. Yeah, BCAT, maybe even local motion. The other aspect is when you say it's a huge amount of work, yeah, but there's also, it's we could, depending on the standard we hold ourselves to, right? Like this could be incredibly like a beautiful document made with all sorts of ArcGIS interactiveness, which I have no ability to do at present. You know, there could be public input and surveys and, you know, or it could be kind of like what Gary and I did, or, I mean, it would have to be a little bit more involved than that. But Gary and I, for the downtown parking facility signage, drove around, took photos. I mean, I spent a lot of time on that document, but part of that was because my laptop was so slow saving it every five minutes and was bogged down with photos. But anyway, I mean, that was
Definitely could be, it could provide a benchmark for other towns perhaps, you know, as to how to calculate their bike parking requirements. It's not that the work is bad, it's just that it's going to take a lot.
No, I didn't hear you saying it's bad, but
And also in the sense, I can say agree with both of you too, because now that we created the bike lanes, are we going to need stops in places where they can put their bikes? And I have to agree with John, you know, people who invest a lot of time biking and stuff or people, you know, even with the schools or anyone else that wants to get involved, even the bike shops. You could talk to the bike owners of the shops and say, who comes in here? Who you, you know, who basically, you know, comes in and there's a lot about what's an organization or something like that. They would more than likely would want to get involved, I'm sure, in some type of workshop like that.
I was going to say, I think the biggest lift, I mean, other than, you know, looking at the data, I think it's figuring out how much data we want to collect. So, you know, how often do we want to be out there counting the bikes and it's a little feat on the street? That needs to happen. I think that's the first step if we take it in bites. But, you know, this data was done every three, sometimes two months, sometimes longer. So figuring out what do we, what's a good sample size?
A while back, we had something looking at, I know you've mentioned Harmony Lot a while back, when pre-COVID, I guess, you know, before that, putting that in and making that a little place for people coming in, biking in, you know.
Yeah, right, could park there.
And parking garage and places like that, you know, downtown, if people could bike into work versus about, you know, if there's no parking. A lot of people are doing that now, you know. I think even with companies, you could ask people who bike to work, you know, there's a lot of, I've seen a lot of people using bikes now going up to the hospital or coming down the hill. Yeah, I would definitely.
Well, like you see, like if you look at this map, all right, I already see Harmony Lot. There's a bunch of bikes that are, you know, not on a rack because there is no bike parking in Harmony Lot or, well, there's something, but Brooks House Bike Rack, that's kind of private, but, you know, maybe converting a parking space in there or finding a place to put a rack in. There's nothing in High Grove Lot, yet there's some, you know, cluster of blues in there. So are there easy places to pick up? Take one parking space and put some racks in it.
By AM track, once the station goes up, I've gone by AM checks that have bike racks and people
There'll be bike racks there.
Yeah.
Covered bike parking.
Yeah.
With a charger.
Yeah, so I guess on the topic of data, certainly I think it would make sense to not just solely rely on this, right? But as far as collecting this much more data again, I don't feel like that's, I feel like that's, you know, excessive. I think an update to see if like all those racks are still there and if they're still the same racks that they are. And, you know, going around and collecting data no more than a few times and somehow deciding, you know, a good cross-section of what those days might be, like a good weather day, sunny day. Like the fall, let's say, you know, during the work hours, after the work hours, midday on a Saturday, on a Sunday and evening on a Saturday or Friday. To me, that seems like, you know, what, there's always more, you know, there's always more data and always an insufficiency, but it's, you know, like, like people were saying, it's a level of maybe making it reasonable.
Right, up and down canal people buy, I see a lot more people biking on a Sunday. Nice weather, they're out there enjoying going down to the retreat and places like, especially Route 30 has been very busy with bikes. So, yeah, something like that, you can ride a bike, mount one on our helmet.
So do you, Simon, Steve, do you have access to this? Or it's, Steve, you were saying that you have the ability to manipulate or that this could be manipulate or that this could be manipulated and modified? And new data could be entered?
Yeah, what I would be able to do is get that data that is being shown on the map part there. And I would be able to update that with what the commission determined was useful to include. And I would be able to make a web map on a similar platform. This looks like it was done through Esri.
Yeah.
Mine would be likely done through a a similar, possibly even ultimately the same in the backend. Open source map package called Leaflet, but that's neither here nor there. But yeah, I've, I've already got a shell of a program written that we could just pop that stuff into and how about?
Yeah, I'm sure we can get this data from the Wyndham Regional Commission and
Okay.
Over my travel. Well, they have this on Google. They showed you all the bike, Google map as
Oh, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I will take the lead and I don't know if I'll get it done before next, you know, month or next two months, but figure out how to do, replicate this, what was done each day a few times, like I described. But then also reach out to to BCAT, let's say, maybe the bike stores. I think BCAT would be maybe sufficient to definitely start with that organization in town and I don't know, just tell them about that process, see if they want to be a part of it. And I mean, that specific part that I, that I said, and then also the, you know, the subsequent steps of maybe they have resources or just their own, you know, specific specialized opinions about what makes, you know, what general characteristics are indicative of sufficient bike parking downtown. And then, and then when that's done, both of those things, kind of like a draft list of of the characteristics, we'll just, you know, bring it to the commission and with the updated data and kind of like a, the general characteristics will give you a sense of like what we have currently and here's what's let's just, I don't know if there's any industry best practice, but we'll at least have what's viewed as best practice by this organization in town and me and maybe staff. And then we'll have it for your review.
So you're just focusing here, not businesses, jobs, places people bike?
Just downtown right now.
The urban center district is, the land use regs will not be requiring it, whereas they will in other districts. Okay. Anything else on the downtown bike parking topic? Seeing none. We'll do our public comment period. Seeing no public.
Seeing none.
Okay.
They might, hey, they're on, might be on the phone or
They're on the phone. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, wrap that up. Any last words before we adjourn? I think we completed all our business, so we won't even need a motion. I'll just, I'll just do it.
Yeah.
If there's no other words to be said. All right, our business is done, so I adjourn this meeting.
Got to get you. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
All right, that's dinner.